Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the September 24th meeting of the Blackstone Millville Regional School District School Committee. I would like you to please join us in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. At this point, we'll do an introduction of members. I am Jane Reggio. I am from the wonderful town of Millville.
Tara Larkin, Millville.
Erin Vinaco, Millville.
Jack Keith, Blackstone.
Harry Goddett, Blackstone.
Sarah Williams, Blackstone.
Karen, you're muted.
Karen Vernon, Millville.
Matt Erwinworth, Assistant Superintendent.
Jason DiPaolo, Superintendent.
And Jill is on here as well.
Jill Pelle Galerani, Director of Learner Support Services.
Thank you. Well, welcome, everybody. We had some warrants sent to us in the minutes of September 10th meeting. At this point, I'll entertain a motion to approve Consent Agenda A.
Move.
Moved by Jack. Is there a second?
Second, Karen.
Second by Karen. It has been moved by Jack, seconded by Karen, to approve Consent Agenda A. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so forward. At this time, it's public forum. So if anybody is watching on the live stream, this would be an opportunity for you to type in comments that we will read. So, hmm. Jesse, I, I, yai, yai, yai. I'll give people time to chance, okay. Is there more to that, or is that the? See if I can get the livestream. Okay. "Good evening. I have a fifth grader and a seventh grader in the district and would like to express my concerns about the fifth grade hybrid remote days. I have spoken with Mrs. Remka about what I see to be a..." "...on remote days, my fifth grader has a total of 90 minutes in front of her teacher for Science and Social Studies, 45 minutes with a specialist teacher, and two hours and 15 minutes of independent work, where she is not in front of a teacher and has no access to a teacher for dialogue, questions, or clarifications. I have heard this is in contrast with the fifth grade students in full remote who have access to their teacher all day and more time, directly engaged in learning. How does the current model for fifth grade hybrid meet the requirement for 850 hours of learning? How is fifth grade hybrid and the fifth grade full remote model equitable in access to teacher and time on learning? Who is providing teacher learning support for students during asynchronous time?" Okay, thank you for your comments.
I'm taking all these notes down, Jake, just that way.
And, well, I know Jesse will also save the, save them, so. Who is providing? That is, oh, okay. So that is the only comment. We'll wait a minute or two to see if anybody else would like to express their concerns. So while we're waiting, I just, I, I first want to thank the staff and the administration in the district. This is essentially a crazy time. Planning has been nonstop. And we are in two worlds, and teachers have their feet in two or three worlds. They're trying to do remote, they're trying to do in-person, they're trying to prepare, they're trying to respond, they're trying to grade. Administration is answering questions, multiple calls. And so, we, we need to ask folks for some kindness and some patience and, and some stepping back before you just have to go out and respond to things. Make sure you understand all sides of the story and make sure you're using the information that we have put out there, the Google form, if you have a question. We, in the district, the staff have a job to do, and that is to teach your students. If they're constantly having to respond to question after question after question. And safety is a huge priority. And security is a huge priority, but education is the number one priority. And we're doing our best to try to make sure that that's happening in an equitable and fair manner, and this has to be fluid. It absolutely has to be fluid. And so, in order for it to be fluid, we really and truly need some patience and some, some understanding as we, as we hurdle the bumps. There will be bumps. Okay. Another comment, "The children at the complex have done an amazing job following the expectations during COVID times. Your children are in good hands." And I believe that they are. But that's somebody else's comment, not mine. All right. Erin, go ahead.
Jason, have you already been like in communication about this issue, or is this something new, the fifth grade?
The, the grade five issue?
Yeah. Or is it an issue that, what is this concern that's coming to us?
Yeah, we had a conversation with the leadership team today. We actually had a leadership team meeting. And I, in the process of scheduling a follow-up with both schools, Millville and the complex, they did share that there is a group, and this sounds about right. I think it was about two hours and 40 minutes, or 30 minutes, or something for the remote hybrid days, because that's actually the time that they are looking for students to be doing some additional work on literacy and math. And the principals have been looking for a way to release a teacher to be available to that time for students, but they haven't had a way of doing that yet. So yes, I do think that what that parent shared is definitely accurate. And it was shared with us this morning at a leadership team meeting. So I will be having a follow-up conversation with both principals. And it's not for a lack of trying. They're trying to figure out who they would be able to essentially release to be able to work with kids on that time on math and the LA. The Science and Social Studies block and the enrichment block is, is, is fine. That's not an issue. It's they're trying to get the kids extra help on those two subjects.
Is that hybrid, the...
Hold on, Erin, because I want to remind everybody, this is, this is public forum, and it's an opportunity for comments. It's not on our agenda, so if you have general comments that you want to make, that's fine. But we shouldn't be specifically talking about a particular grade, or teachers, or anything like that. That's not on our agenda.
Are you talking to me or public forum?
In general. Both. All of the above.
Okay. But as a committee, we can bring up any questions or concerns, even that isn't on our agenda. So, I mean, I was just going to ask, if the cohorts worked out to what was originally presented to us, is this, is this that group of 40 for the hybrid, or is this? And my next question was, are the remote kids in any grade? So, well, I guess four and five. Are they, are they remote together, four and five, or did we do remote by Millville Blackstone?
The full remote kids, like the remote, remote kids, they don't come in at all together?
Fourth, so Millville Blackstone, they are together by grade?
For the full remote. The, the hybrid remote kids, they are school-specific.
They are school-specific. So do you know what, where we ended up on numbers for the cohorts? I don't know, for any ever?
I do. I do have the numbers. I don't have them at my fingertips right now, but I do have the specific numbers.
Okay. Now that things are, now that we're into like our second week, I know it's only the third day of in-school for purple. So it doesn't even, though it's the second week, I still don't feel like it's knee-deep. But I would like to see where we ended up, like class size-wise, in hybrid, remote. I would say four through, four through eight for me.
Sure. Yeah, if you remember at one of the meetings, planning meetings, Jenny and the principal at the complex and MES had shared, remember they had that spreadsheet that had all the numbers broken down by grades and who was in which section? And I can definitely get that updated, and I could share it with the committee in a weekly update. I'd be happy to do that.
Yeah, I would just like to see it, because I know in one of your last emails to the community, it had, like, we had put a hard stop on changes. But I know changes did happen from when we saw it to when that day came. So I think it's important that we know where we stand.
Yep. Yeah, I'm happy to do that.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop this here, because we're still in public forum. And Erin, we can bring this up in our school committee when it comes to our component, because we still have people who want to make some comments. And I don't want to get off of that for, for right now. So the next one was, "Shout out to the awesome police officers who have helped with bus arrivals, lunches, and dismissal." And then, another question. Remember, this is public forum. This isn't a question-and-answer opportunity. This is not a Facebook Live. It's just an opportunity for you to, for the public to make comments about what they see or feel or need. But what conditions need to be met before the district will consider bringing back other grades full-time? So, those will be ongoing discussions, and as we have them and have information to share, and maybe when we hear about the school opening and kind of next steps that may come up. Okay. So nothing else. We'll move on to school committee. And I guess at this point, Erin, was there other questions or topics that you wanted to bring up?
Could we move school committee beyond his opening, just in case any of us have questions from?
Yeah, well, we also have our own forum, so you can certainly ask questions during that time, too. But absolutely.
I'm definitely interested in the answer to that last question that you just read. But I feel like he'll probably talk about that, so I don't want to make him do it twice.
Sarah, regional agreement update?
All right. So as we all know, the regional agreement, for it to be amended, it needs to be voted on in both towns at special town meeting. In Millville, this is going to take place at the special town meeting on Saturday, October 3rd, at noon at Millville Elementary School. I'm told we are Article Number 9 of 14. So, good. The amended agreement will be presented for an up or down vote. And that, what that means is, unlike most articles, I think most, if not many, most of them you can change on the floor, like you can propose changes. But with the regional agreement, it's just up or down. You vote on the language as it is. And you need a simple majority for it to pass. Again, Millville, October 3rd. In Blackstone, the Board of Selectmen are going, are planning to vote on October 6th to whether or not they're going to have a special town meeting. The tentative, the date that has been mentioned for a possible special town meeting is November 24th, but that hasn't been decided yet. Same rules would apply, up or down vote, no changes on the floor, and simple majority for passage. We've started our out, well, we've restarted our outreach efforts. Last weekend, we went to the Apple Fest, which was a lot of fun for me, because I got to be a judge for the apple content, or what? No, the baking, apple pie baking contest. And we had an info table. We're going to continue posting the numerous flyers, videos, and other information that we started back in the spring. All of the information is available on the BM RSD website. And we're working on getting it out to the towns for their websites. So if you see any of the information out there on Facebook, go ahead and, like the flyers, Pam Maloney did a great job on those. You could reshare them. That would be awesome. And just show up and vote. If there are any questions, feel free to email me. It's sarahwilliams@bmsd.net.
Any questions for Sarah? Thank you, Sarah.
I just have one.
Oh, go ahead.
One clarification. I think November 14th, not 24th.
Oh, I said it again.
You did.
November 14th. Ah, November 14th in Blackstone, not 24th. 24th is almost Thanksgiving. That would be crazy. So, somebody go back and edit that after the, oh, that's legal. Never mind. November 14th.
November 14th. And, and their meeting on October 6th is actually to open, open warrants. So I do believe they're going to have the special town meeting, but they could vote not to open warrants, so there's always a chance, I guess. Okay.
Thanks, Tara.
Anyone else? Questions for Sarah, or comments about the regional agreement? Okay. Hearing none, we'll go to the report of the superintendent.
Thanks, Ms. Reggio. Good evening, folks. I just have two items this evening to, to share with the committee and the community. The first is just an update on our school reopening. As you know, we are in Week 2, but as Ms. Vinaco mentioned, Day 3 for some students in terms of how the schedule is rolled out. And, you know, by and large, we've had not a perfect opening by any sense. You know, it wasn't something that we expected would happen, but I think we've had a overall very positive school reopening. It has been really great to see the kids back in the building, our students back in the building, seeing them get off the bus, watching kindergartners start their K-12 experience, seeing the seniors come in for their last year, and everything in between. I will say that the creativity and the innovation of our teaching staff and our support staff has been humbling. I'm really appreciative of the work that our, our leaders have done, that our teachers and our support staff have done to really help keep our schools safe, keep the students learning, and keep the communication strong. I think that is something that everybody has worked very, very diligently on. And I'm going to talk about that in a few minutes, in terms of some, some ways that we can do this better, in terms of the communication, to make sure that we're really getting the outcomes that we need and that we're getting the focus that we need. But before getting into that, I do want to share a few things. I'd like to take a minute and just share a little bit about the launch of the Boys and Girls Club, and talk a little bit about the expansion of that over time. And I do want to share with the, the committee and the community who's tuning in a bit about the, some of the feedback we're getting from families on the Google forms that we sent out. Because I do think it's important, you know, I put in my email to families that we're using this method, because we want to really track and identify patterns and trends of where we can improve and fix some things. So I want to share those with everybody, so that they get a sense of where the areas are that, you know, we got feedback from parents and where we can continue to strive for improvement. But before that, it was really, it was great launching the Boys and Girls Club this week and being able to afford that, to offer that to our families, to our families tuning in. We will be expanding. We started small. We have currently about 30 students participating across the two cohorts. So we're starting, we started with about 15 kids in each cohort. And it was great. You know, the kids true-to-form, came with a really positive attitude. They had their backpacks, their Chromebooks, their notebooks. We have two tutors, Ms. Grace and Mr. Mark, who are doing great work at the Boys and Girls Club. We have one of our LPNs there, you know, scanning the kids in and taking their temperatures and making sure that they're, you know, that they're healthy. We have our food service program that's running, so kids have breakfast and lunch and snack. And our tutors have all of the student schedules. So, again, where it's not perfect, right? It's 8:00 to 2:00. So obviously, our elementary students are early to school, so to speak. And they sign off about 5 minutes to 2:00, 2 o'clock, when they get picked up. I do know that a lot of parents have been kind of zipping back home so their students can log back in for the last half hour and do any wrap-up work. And the middle school is just about falls within the school day. They're a couple minutes behind logging in, but the principals have the list and the staff have the list of the kids who are attending. And it's great. It's just, you know, I spoke with a lot of parents. I was there Monday to check the kids in, myself and Mr. Aaron Worth and I were there on Tuesday to sign the kids out. And of course, Matt put his operational lens on it and told me how it could run better in terms of dismissal, which was very helpful, as he usually does. And then I was able to go and meet with the families again today, because we had the second cohort coming, which was actually Cohort 1, because it's opposite, right? So talk about tricky. But, so that was really great to meet and greet the new families. And we check in routinely during the day. So, so families that are, that are tuning in, we have a, we have a super-long waitlist, but we're going to try to fill those cohorts to about 40 students. But we wanted to just take a small piece, launch it, make sure there were no issues. And a big shout-out to the support of Bruce and Sarah, who are at the helm of running the Boys and Girls Club in Blackstone. They've been awesome the, the board of the Boys and Girls Club. So we're just really appreciative of the support on that. We will be looking to grow the students participating in that within the next couple of weeks. And so they'll be receiving an email from my office, you know, letting them know if they're still interested, you know, that they could start in a specific time. So we'll get all that information out to parents over the next couple of weeks, but we wanted to get the program up and running and settled before we expanded. So some good news there. So to shift gears, just to talk a little bit about the Google forms that we sent out to parents, just so I want everybody to know what we do with those. I have been reviewing those weekly and identifying patterns and trends, sending those patterns and trends to principals, who are also reviewing them. And then we set a target date for which to get back to the families on some of their issues. And what we've been doing is clustering some of the parents together. And we put their emails in the, in the, in the BCC line, so they can't all, you know, see who else is on there for confidentiality reasons, and then try to respond to all the families together, so they get the same message regarding their concerns. So here are some of the concerns that we've seen bubble up across the system. Scheduling in general, particularly at the, at the elementary level around specials. And of course, I've got this feedback from the parents on the grade five issue, so we'll definitely look at that. Scheduling at the middle school, specifically around the remote, hybrid remote days looking different than the in-person instruction. And so Ms. Current did a video for families to try to, you know, kind of talk through how that all works last week. I know she sent it out to everybody. So we saw some issues there. We have seen some emails regarding technology at, at all grade levels, issues with Chromebooks, which have since come in. Mr. Aaron Worth and the tech team have been working hard at getting those out. We prioritize grade 6, because those students, as a, you know, one-to-one, they didn't have any devices. They needed those first to really plug into the middle school curriculum. And then the tech team have prioritized distribution from there. So technology was an issue that came up. Lunch. We've heard a couple of different times. And it's different, you know, it feels different for the students. You know, we tried to talk the community through. If, if anybody, you know, watching the committee meeting tonight, you know, watched the videos that the principals sent out, that I sent out to the entire school community, walking through what the school kind of looks like and how it will feel. You know, the cafeteria was part of that. And explaining where the students would sit, and the masks being off, and, you know, how far apart they would be, but actually giving the visual itself and how the lunches would run. The principals, you know, took a lot of time to put those together for our community. So if you haven't seen those, I'd recommend just search your emails from me, because I did send it, I think it was the first week in September in my update. So we saw some feedback on lunch links. Some of the links not working that were going out, like the Google links, so that was an issue, where teachers have been trying to resend those. So, so far, those are some of the issues that have bubbled up. We still are getting requests, particularly at the high school, where families that have chosen the remote, their children are asked, I'm sorry, that it shows the hybrid, their children are asking to shift to remote. They, what we're hearing is they don't like the cohort they're in. And/or, you know, they're seeing, because of the way the high school is set up, the teachers are live-streaming. So they've got the in-person students and they've got the remote students together. But the kids that are in person are seeing their, you know, their, their friends at home, and they're in school. And I think there's a sense or a desire to want to be with them at home, so to speak. So there have been some asks there. But, you know, by and large, that's kind of the bulk of what we're seeing in terms of feedback. A big issue that came up that I would like to address also, which was my error, and I do want to apologize to the middle school families for this. I had shared repeatedly how the middle school teachers were going to transition and not the students. And we did make a change in that, and we didn't, we did not communicate that to the family, so that was our fault. And I'll explain to you the reasoning behind the change. What the, what we have provided to teachers is essentially that butcher block paper that they can cover their desk with at, for each period, and a disinfecting spray and the paper towels, so we can wipe the desk down in between classes. So we have the cleaning resources that we need available. And if you remember, there's 150, there's only 150 students a day at best at the middle school, which is about 50 students per grade level, so the numbers are really small. And so given that, you know, there was a request to have the students transition, and I thought because of all the provisions we put in place that that would be fine. But we did not communicate that to the families, so we certainly apologize for that. But that was another issue that came up with four or five families at the middle school. They wanted to know why nobody communicated that to them. And so it was an oversight, you know, for, you know, for no other reason. So I wanted to address that. And so what I would like to also mention this evening to any of our families tuning in, and Ms. Reggio, you teed this off already, but I would like to, if I could, take a moment and just follow up. We have a core value in our school system of civility. And that is something I think everybody needs to lean into right now, as we continue to work our way through the opening of this school year. If I may be so blunt as to share, we have received quite a few emails from families, from parents that are incredibly unpleasant, that have a very angry tone. A lot of capital, you know, letters all in a string, lots of exclamation points. No hello, no greeting, no closure. Sometimes we're not even sure who the parent's child is. These are seeming to be written in a state of anger. So what I would ask parents to do is please refrain from that. If you have some questions, politely ask them. We're certainly not afraid to answer those questions, and I'm going to speak to how we're going to do that in a minute. But please refrain from angry emails. Please refrain from offensive language. We received an email today that I found incredibly offensive. And I do want to address it, because I think it was way out of line in terms of some of the language that this parent used. So we're asking the community to please refrain from that. There is nothing personal in this. Everybody's trying their best. They're working their hardest. I will tell you that I have directed the principals not to answer those emails, instead to make a phone call to the person that's sending them and try to have a conversation over the phone. This is, unfortunately, has consumed a significant amount of time from our teachers and from our principals and from our administrators. And that's a problem, because we only have the students with us for so many hours a day. And the principals, all of us, need to be spending time in the classrooms, making sure that everything is cleaned, up to par, everybody's safe, and that the learning is taking place to the degree which it needs to. So I have directed principals to answer those, those emails after school with a phone call to parents. Because, I'm telling you, it's, there's nothing more disconcerting for a principal than to check their email quickly at 10 o'clock in the morning, and there is a, a email that lacks the civility that is in our core values as a school system. It throws them off for the day, and they spend an inordinate amount of time on that and not time with the kids in the classroom, with the teachers, and making sure that the custodial staff is doing what they need to do. So I'm letting the community know that I've directed principals not to answer those emails, but to do it with a phone call after school. We've got to keep the building safe, and we've got to keep the students learning, and those have to be the top priorities. Also, I would ask parents, I've heard from quite a few teachers this week, some concerns from, from teachers, where parents are recording their Zoom sessions with their cell phones. Some parents have been overheard commenting about the teacher's instruction and the child's device. Um, some parents have been overheard commenting about the teacher's instruction and the child's device is not on mute. Um, so the teacher is hearing some of those, you know, some of that feedback or those comments, uh, which are certainly not productive. So I'm letting our parents know that they can't record the Zoom session. Um, and if you have feedback uh for our teachers, then I would ask you to politely outreach the teacher and share that feedback. Um, everybody's working hard. The teachers are working very, very different than the spring. They're working very hard, they're working to collaborate more with families, with the staff, with the other staff administration to make sure the students have what they need. Um, so I, you know, I didn't mean to be too long-winded about this, but this is something um that I think needs to be addressed, so. That concludes my update on school reopening. I don't know if there are any questions on that.
Any questions? Erin, you're smiling. No questions? You're on mute, huh? You're on mute.
Hi, um, I have a few questions. But um, I, I, I feel like you're dressed a lot and I know it's only been a few days. Um, would you be able to touch on now or would you rather get back to us that um question that came through public forum that Jane said about what conditions do we need to meet to bring more kids back? Not all kids, but.
Yeah, so I can, I can answer um at least the first part of that, which is, um, and let me explain about me about the first part. So we had asked parents to make a commitment, right, to a particular model. At the elementary level, we had shared with families that we would ask them, you know, to commit for the first thirty days and try out the model that they're in. And then at the secondary level, we asked uh families to commit to the first quarter. So I think what's gonna be interesting is uh as we, as we near the end of that first window, um, and I know this isn't probably a, a word families want to hear again, because I know we, we did a lot of it, but we, we do need to resurvey the families to get a sense of where they are. Um, and what, you know, if they want to stick with the plan that they selected or if they would be interested in shifting uh plans. Uh, because as you can imagine, there is pretty significant uh impact on those decisions regarding staffing, transportation and space. Um, so I think that's the, um, uh, Erin, to your question, I think that's the first step in that process is getting a sense of where, you know, kind of where everybody's head uh space is regarding the plan they picked. And I'm saying that because if we have a scenario where, um, you know, I'll pick a grade, a grade, we'll say kindergarten, I'll just use kindergarten. You know, fifteen of the, you know, twenty-five or twenty-eight families that opted for remote all want to come back. Well, that will be uh, that will be a challenge for us to figure out spacing staffing and transportation for that. So we have to look, I think, first at what is the, what is the um kind of the feel of the community in terms of the plan they picked? And if they were, you know, if we're able to do some reshuffling, what might that look like? Um, and then, once we have a sense of that, that will help us kind of determine, um, you know, what, what we have for space at what grade level uh and in what building. Um, but also, we, we do have to start having discussions at some point around, you know, prioritizing, you know, where do we, where do we increase students in terms of their, you know, their instructional time, you know? And there's a lot of different directions we could go with this. You know, do we look at the elementary school and start with fourth and fifth grade uh and try to build up? Or do we look at the middle school and we look specifically at grade six and start to build out their time? Do we look at the, for this, you know, do we look at the seniors? Right, this, that, this is a really important time for them in terms of having FaceTime with their counselors and their teachers. Um, and so I think there's a lot of conversations that will need to happen um as we start thinking about how do we reopen in a more, um, you know, assertive capacity. But I also think there's something else that we need to take in mind uh or keep in mind, which is, you know, as we look at mid to end of November, we're going into the holiday season. So there's a lot to think about there in terms of travel and, you know, families possibly needing to quarantine when they return or staff, what are the implications on that? Um, and flu season, you know, in terms of making sure that folks are complying with the flu, uh, the vaccine requirement and kids having the shot, you know, their flu vaccine by the end of December. Um, there's a lot of different factors that we have to look at. We also have to look at a transmission rate within the school system, right? Right now, it's none, which is awesome. I think everyone's done a really great job. Uh, but we have, you know, we've got quite a few students at home um that have, you know, uh, like cold symptoms, right? And you, you can't discern um what it, you know, whether it's cold or COVID. So there are children that are at home with cold symptoms. We've had staff that are at home with cold symptoms. So I think we have to continue to monitor, um, you know, that as well over the next few weeks. So I wish I had a better answer, Erin, and I know that's like a really kind of roundabout way to answer it, but.
So actually, one of the things you mentioned were that you had a lot of high schoolers when they saw that. So um, are you allowing those high, your, those high school requests to go full remote? Are those, are they in their quarter?
That is a, I'm really glad you asked that because, no, we're not, we're not allowing the fam, the high schoolers to shift. Um, although I will say what we have received, uh, about a half dozen um calls as of late is from the parents saying, "Well, my student, you know, doesn't feel good today, so he's gonna stay home and just, he's just gonna zoom in to class." Well, the student's gonna be marked absent. We still want the student participating, but the student's gonna be marked absent for that. So, you know, to our families who are listening or, you know, our high school students who are kind of, you know, tuning in, uh, we'd ask them not to do that, you know, unless legitimately they're not feeling well, right? Like, which we understand that. Um, but they also happen to be the students who asked if they could switch to the full remote. And so, um, you know, we have a, we have a, obviously a record of that. So, um, you know, we want students to access their curriculum, we want them participating, but they chose this model. So we're asking them to stick with it for the core.
Um, then my last question, which you didn't mention, but I had written down just because I wanted to talk about it tonight. Um, the tents, they look amazing this week. Um, I, I, I will just say it because I want everyone to know. I had already reached out to Dr. DeFalco because I was afraid they were going to blow away. And I want those to work and we spent a lot of money on them. So my question is, are they being used? Do you know, are the, are they a sign-up thing? Um, do they have Wi-Fi? Is it something that's easy for the teachers to use?
Sure, so depending on the school, they're being used at different, to do, to different degrees. So Millville Elementary actually uses theirs, theirs a lot. Um, they have theirs out in the field and then there's one uh near the pre-k uh classrooms. And then there's one on the other side of the kindergarten, like the backside of the building, near the, where the kindergarten classrooms are now. Um, so theirs are, are used very frequently. Um, the complex, I know the specialists, um, like music are, you know, they're using them uh more often than the classroom teachers. Um, the middle school, um, and the high school are not using them as much as the elementary schools. Um, and I think it's probably because of the technology piece. And I'll let Matt speak to the Wi-Fi and the hotspots in a second. Um, but when you look at how the instruction is set up um at the second, at the sixth through twelve grade levels, the teachers are using um their technology like I've never seen before. So they'll have their smart board and they're broadcasting the remote students in. And they have their um in-person kids in front of them. And so my sense is it's easier for them to be in their own classroom space because of the technology. Um, so, but I'll pause there and let Matt speak to the Wi-Fi.
Oh, sure. So uh absolutely correct, Dr. DeFalco, what you were saying about teachers using the technology in the classrooms. They have webcams and document cameras that they're, they're using to transmit images um from classroom to classroom. I think that's also more so the case at the complex. You mentioned that there's a little bit less use at the complex that could be connected to the smart boards that they have and some of the equipment that they've been using inside within their classrooms. But to speak to the Wi-Fi, um, we ordered four hotspots for every building. Um, as of right now, some of those hotspots were actually given away and, and prioritized to students that needed them. Um, so at this point, we have three hotspots for each building and we have more coming, probably within a couple of days. And those hotspots, um, they actually just came in and they'll be deployed to the tents uh either tomorrow or Monday.
But there is a, there is a signup uh process.
Yep. Each, each one of the, each one of the um buildings has a slightly different signup process. Some of them have made Google Forms that they distributed to the teachers and others have calendars, they have it booked as a room in the building and they, they just reserve it that way.
I would just like to say, maybe we can encourage it a little more, especially right now while it is still nice enough. Um, also, maybe lunch as an option. I know what, getting lunch um organized through these first weeks was important. But, you know, maybe they can go out in groups, which they don't need the Wi-Fi then. So it would just be a nice break, I think, for the kids from the walls.
Definitely.
Those are my questions. Thank you.
Anyone else? Tara?
Um, so back to um, as far as high school. Um, so when the teacher is teaching the class, she has her in-person people and she has her hybrid remote. Is the remote, remote kid, she has the full remotes kids too, or she or he?
Some of them do, yeah. So some of them have, the way the high school did the schedule, which is different than what we initially thought. We thought they were gonna have a remote period. Uh, and um, what the high school staff ended up doing was taking the groups of students together uh and teaching them collectively, so that they didn't have to essentially repeat the same lesson multiple times. And also wanting to give students the opportunity to still partner with each other. Um, so it was really interesting, Tara, when I was there last Friday, I was in about fifteen classrooms total, but they were all doing it a little bit different, which was really kind of interesting. So um, what we, what we noticed was that uh kind of a theme across all classrooms was that the teacher had the in-person students in whatever combination of the remote students together. Um, so the kids were still, uh, which was actually kind of creative. I mean, the kids were still working together on projects um through uh like breakout rooms like this. Um, and some teachers were live streaming uh their lessons and some um were not. So some classes, I noticed, for instance, um, in an engineering course, the teacher was doing a lot of the theory in the bookwork with the students at home. And he had the students together, um, and the students who were in person were doing a lot of the application and the project work. And then they're gonna, like, then they switch when they, when they come in, but they were all still together. So the students that were at home still were up on the same screen and were able to connect with the, with the students who were in person. Uh, it was actually pretty remarkable to see how the teachers have kind of pulled all of this together. Um, so yeah, so it was, it's different than what we thought it was going to be. We thought there would be like a, a remote period that would rotate. Um, but by and large, the, the staff wanted to find a way to not have to, you know, replicate their lessons, but actually have the kids together to be able to deliver the instruction all at once.
Right. Um, yeah, so it'd be nice to see that come through again, some, like, it's only the third day for some and, you know, it's early on, so it's nice to see how that's actually gonna work out. Um, and you said, some teachers doing it differently, because I think I've seen a little bit different. So I'm just waiting to see how it goes. Um, and then a question, um, kind of with, on the lines of the public forum question that came in from that fifth grade parent. Um, for elementary kids, just the time on learning. Um, I know you started to say something about the ELA and math might be some of the work they get for those time, for the time of the day that the teacher is not with them. Um, will there be someone to support them, like, if they have a question for that work? Because right now it seems that that teacher, the remote teacher, is with another group of kids.
Right. Yeah, that, so that was what, that was what we were discussing at this morning's leadership team meeting. Is that there were two, I don't know, two and a half hours or something, or two hours and forty-five minutes. Um, there's a window where there's not, that, that, there's not a teacher available. So we need to fix that. We just have to figure out the, you know, is it something that we can do with our existing staff? Or is it something where we need to look for a partner teacher? Um, so we, we need to figure that problem out for sure.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes, Jane.
Okay, go ahead, Tammy.
Sorry, I was trying to find my unmute button. I have, I'm going to go all the way back to the Boys and Girls Club. I think that was the first um report Jason did. And just ask about um special education support in that forum. I, I realize that that's really a home day, a home day. So there's distance learning going on. Um, but I am seeing, and I, and I've been a little disconnected this week, but I'm seeing some questions about how the special, students with IEPs that are at the Boys and Girls Club, are they continuing to receive services outlined in their IEP while there remotely?
Yeah, and Jill can speak to that because it's so, it doesn't matter where they are per se. It's, as a remote learning day, Jill has set up with the team chairs and the special ed teachers the, the necessary services as identified in the IEP. But Jill, do you want to speak to that?
Sure, so as I think I mentioned before, um, with COVID and some services, although they're delivered, they're delivered differently. So our staff's been working very hard on the COVID um learning plans and they've all reached out to parents and are putting that all on document. But if they have a student who is receiving, um, say, a small group, um, say, math or English, those are scheduled throughout the day even remotely. Um, we also have some students who maybe are fully remote, um, who have some services and inclusion. And what we're trying to do is also support them at another time during the day because we know that inclusion when kids are remote is very different when they're in person with them. So as we're going through, they are still getting their services, if it's small group and inclusion. If any of those services look differently um than they would in school when they're remote, those are documented on the um COVID special education learning plans. And like I said, all of our teachers have reached out to all of our families. So I'm just gonna say, if any family hasn't heard, um, you should have. Um, I know our teachers have left um messages um and are keep trying to parent, getting in touch with parents, or we haven't. But Tammy, the services are continuing to be delivered. And like I said, if for any reason they're delivered differently, um, we are documenting that and trying to provide some of our students some additional supports.
Thanks, Jill.
Anyone else? Okay, Dr. DeFalco, I think you have something else.
Yes, uh, my last item is just, um, I would like the uh, uh, the support of the committee to move our food service director for this year only um to a full-time position. Um, as you know, the food service program is self-sustaining. It's not, um, you know, it's, it, it doesn't come out of our budget, of course, unless it's a shortfall, which I, I definitely understand, we have to close that gap. Um, but uh, our food service director, uh, because of COVID and all the work we've done in this area, is, she's working around the clock. And technically, she's part-time and hasn't worked part-time, I don't think, since March. Um, but um, we do want to do a, a one-year addendum to her contract uh and make her full-time for this school year until June thirtieth. Um, and would like the school committee's support and authorization to do that.
I wanted to just jump in for one second on that.
Sure, go ahead, Matt.
Thank you, sorry. Well, I, I thought it would, would be important for the, for the committee to know, A, that um the program, when it's running in this, in this format, is generating sufficient funds to support that position at a full-time rate. And I, as Jason mentioned, the only risk of the general fund ever being affected by the food services is when there is a potential balance owed. But given the surplus that the food ser, the food services program is running, I would not anticipate that for this year that would be an issue, particularly since students aren't being charged at this point, so they're not gonna be running up any balances.
Um, I will happily and proudly entertain that motion because I think we have somebody who has made us really, really, really look good. Um, and I can't personally thank her enough. So I will entertain a motion to move her to full-time. Is there a second?
Second by Tammy.
Thank you. So motion by Tara, second by Tammy to uh move the food service director to a full-time position. Is there any discussion?
I, I just want to thank um her, um, for her hard work during the summer um and through now. I know, um, all, you know, all-
I know, you know, all procedures and processes had to be changed in order to make things work. And so that's not easy, so thank you very much.
Anyone else? Hearing nothing? All those in favor of moving, go ahead, Jack?
Oh, no, I just, I unmuted myself.
Okay, moving full-time, food service director to full-time, say aye, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so authorized.
Thank you so much. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Dr. DeFalco. And again, thank you to yourself, Matt, Jill, the principals, all your leadership team. As many bumps as there have been in the road, there's been some incredible smooth sailing. And we're off to a tremendous start. And I would put the education that our students are receiving up against any, in any district statewide and beyond. So kudos to the staff. And public school committee forum, is there anybody that has any bits or pieces of information they'd like to share? Or questions or concerns or things for future agendas?
Tara?
I just want to reiterate the thank you to all the teachers and staff, principal, Jason, everybody who's done everything. I know my boys are very happy, they're hybrid, they're loving it. I have nieces and nephews who are doing full remote, they're also loving that. So it seems, you know, the platforms are fitting. Can we just, my question a little while ago about elementary, do you have an idea of like when we would know, like for the support? Do you need like a week, two weeks?
Yeah, so, so I will be meeting with Dr. Remka and Ms. Schaefer early, early next week, like Monday, Tuesday, at the latest. So my, my hope is that by the end of next week, we'll have a resolution, if not before then. We want to, because the students are, they're there, you know, and like that worries us. And it's bothering everybody, again, to the point where I, Dr. Remka and Ms. Schaefer mentioned it this morning. Like, we've got to come up with a solution.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely. Glad you guys brought that.
Is that only a fifth grade issue or is it fourth grade too? Are they being run on the same schedule?
I think it's both.
Definitely both.
Yeah.
Definitely both, yep.
Do that.
Anyone else?
I would just like to say a big thank you to everyone that has put in uncountable hours through the summer to get us here. Jason, that's definitely you, Matt, Jill, all of the administrators. I don't even know if people know the hours that you guys have put in and the time and energy. You know, I, I'm sure they don't just assume that everything fell into place, but I think it's important to know, to mention the, the energy that had to go in to get us here. I also want to point out that it is so nice to see and hear all the kids back outside in the community, the sports tryouts, the band. It's truly been missed through our community. People have been talking about it on social media, you know, just the noise. So I think someone posted on Facebook the other day that they, they could hear the kids outside, so they, they lit a fire and sat outside to listen to them. So I, I think that little bit of normalcy, it's going a very long way. And for the kids too, to be able to be in school, even if it's a little bit of time, but to be able to participate in their activities, it's huge. So thank you for getting us here. And I know we're all just hoping we stay. So, and that thank you is to all the administrators.
Yeah. And, and I would add the union executive boards themselves, because I have to say that, as many meetings as I sat in, and it wasn't even a tenth of what other people did. I know that, you know, Esther and Kathy and Julie, you know, I know they were all there as well. So people have been working really hard and, and it's noticed and it's appreciated. And we still have a job to do. And we'll continue to plug at it day after day and we need to listen to people. So please do reach out, either using the Google Forms or an appropriate method of communication and kindly and respectfully. Anyone else?
I just want to add to both of your thanks and to, to all of the teachers out there. I know the struggle is real when you're trying to get lessons together to meet, you know, in a, in a normal, typical day, meeting the needs of our diverse population. But doing so in multiple modalities every day and, and it's, it's mind-boggling from a teacher's perspective, how long that takes to do when you're so used to one setup and you do that well, and then you have to switch modes and your frustration with, you know, technology and bandwidth and all of these things that we never thought we would have to worry about during the school day to the, to the level we are now. And so thank you to the teachers for coming to work every day. There are some districts out there that that is not happening. And so thank you for putting our kids first, because that's what we're here in this business to do. So thank you very much. Thanks to the parents for, just keep your patience. We're, we're going to get there. And, you know, just remember, we're all working, we all in, in, in the district are working really hard to meet everybody's needs. It's, you know, if there's a slip up, it's, it's not purposeful. It's, it's, we're just trying to get there. And, you know, working in another district, I can tell you, our road is not any smoother than what we're experiencing here in town. So hang in there.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, our next meeting is scheduled for October 8. The Millville, as Sarah mentioned, the Millville special town meeting, October 3. There is a Millville Finance Committee meeting, public forum, happening in about three minutes. And I think those are the upcoming meetings, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn. So move. Move by Tara.
Second.
Second by Tammy. All those in favor? Aye, aye. Opposed? All right, well, thank you all very much for your time and October 8.